Good evening, everyone. On behalf of you Morehead City Council, welcome. It is a pleasure to have everybody join us this evening as we conduct the people's business in your house. And I'm glad you were able to make it and glad the weather got out of here because if this meeting was two nights ago or so, it'd been kind of rough getting here. We would have been here, but it's been a little rough on us. But it's always a pleasure to see everyone. So again, thank you for coming and recognize Councilmember George Blue for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we love you and thank you for this day you've given us, and we thank you for the many blessings you provide for us each and every day. Heavenly Father, help us to be mindful that each and every blessing we receive come from you and because you love us. We thank you for all the many people in our community who work together, giving of their time to make Morehead City their greatest place on earth to live and work and raise our families. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity you've given our mayor and our city council and our staff to serve the people of Morehead City. Help us to be mindful that each one of us are in these positions to serve, and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance as we lead and make decisions for our city. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. We ask you now if you're able to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Well, most of us, if not all of us, have been at our meetings before, and the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. A lot of these is what I refer to as housekeeping items that we go through every month, a lot of reports and information. And each committee has presented this information, and then if everything's okay, they recommend it to the council for full consideration. So we have a consent agenda on our agenda tonight, and we can make a motion to adopt this with one motion or pull any item off for individual consideration. I'll ask if there's a motion to adopt as presented.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt this consent agenda.
I'll second it, Jerry. All right. Motion made by Richard. Seconded by Harvey. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Item number three is a new business, and this is to adopt the revised resolution, excuse me, Adopt Resolution 2025-R-49, which will be approving the American Disabilities Act, the ADA Transition Plan. The documents are here in front of us, and let's see, who would that, Sandy, I was looking for you over there. You snuck up on me. And Sandy, our planning director, will present this to the council.
Good evening. Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act requires that public entities make their programs, services, and activities accessible to individuals with disabilities. In April 2022, Morehead City collaborated with the Stewart Consulting Firm to conduct a self-evaluation of its facilities and services and to develop a transition plan aimed at ensuring equal access to public infrastructure and services. A copy of the complete plan is available on the city website, and please note that this will be a living document and will be reviewed at least annually. The staff will regularly assess the improvements that have been made and will submit requests to ensure the continuation of these projects. And the city can also add new projects as they're identified. Jake Petrowski, Practice Leader at Stewart Consulting Firm, is here to provide an overview of the project for the council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me, Jake Petrowski. I worked with Sandy over the last, I guess, six months or so to kind of finish this plan. This was a really big effort, and our transportation group led the effort, you know, the last probably year, year and a half before I got involved, but they got kind of busy, so I took it over. We've done a lot of these. Excited to kind of bring and talk about some of the highlights with you all. Just the project background. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires public entities, including cities, to ensure that their programs and services and activities are accessible to individuals with disabilities. And in North Carolina, to comply with this mandate, entities with 50 or more employees must conduct a self-evaluation of current facilities and document those findings in ADA plan, with the idea being that over time, you all would make a concerted effort to address those priorities, and they may evolve over time. But it's really meant to document where we're at and the work that we have before us. And that's really what this transition plan is all about. You know, again, this is just more information on Title II of the Act. Some of the implications, if you don't do it, federal funding might be withheld, and that's something we don't want to happen. And FHWA requires to look at public rights of way as well. That's another piece of the puzzle. So looking at compliant pedestrian ramps and sidewalks with truncated domes for those visually impaired, traffic signals with the audio component, and those sorts of things. And you all have, you know, over the years, upgraded a lot of your sidewalks, but we did look at core section of your public rights of way and documented findings there. And then staff also looked at buildings and also parks were also part of what was evaluated. So just a summary of some of the data that we collected. We did look at some of the programmatic things and policies that are just required by the ADA administrative requirements, making sure that we have effective communication and general non-discrimination clauses, website accessibility and program accessibility. So some of those were staff rule changes, website changes, those sorts of things. And then the public right-of-way data collection component was pretty significant. We collected data on 476 curb ramps and 628 hazards. So those could be trip hazards or maintenance needs, debris, it could be vegetation landscaping that's impacting accessibility on a sidewalk, driveways erosion, some low spots that had drainage issues. That was also a pretty common thing that we found in different places. And then there was an ADA survey that was online in paper format, fall of 2022, that allowed people to submit their thoughts on accessibility and priorities. Other facilities were evaluated, from parks and rec and beach accesses to city buildings, and looking at, you know, how do folks move from the sidewalk to the building or from the parking lot into the building? Are the programs or services within that building accessible based on doorway width? Even getting into the bathrooms, and if there's some things that need to be changed in the bathrooms to make them more accessible. All that was part of the evaluation. The online survey really looked at level of accessibility of city sidewalks and obstacles, had an opportunity to submit specific streets and intersections, talked about accessibility with buildings and parks and rec, and some information on prioritization of where we should make improvements. Top issues were mainly with sidewalks, obstructions, and utilly poor overgrown vegetation, there's drainage and puddles, and then some places where we lack curb ramps or poor condition of curb ramps. In some cases, you all have been actively upgrading sidewalks and putting in curb ramps and strips and signals and that sort of thing, but there also are some that, you know, still need work. So buildings, we had an average of good rating, parks, average excellent rating. So some work to do on the buildings as well. We also did outreach to stakeholders through the process and made sure that the city's outward-facing policies and standards related to accessibility were up to par. Again, you know, there's some other things in the ADA planning that we had to do. We had to assign an ADA coordinator. We had to establish a grievance procedure. There was the public involvement, the self-evaluation, and the transition plan itself, which you have before us. There's some other steps that come as part of this ADA planning process, and that's identifying and funding for implementation, and then monitoring progress, and that's something that Sandy mentioned. You know, it's not meant to be a one-and-done, you know, this is your plan and you're good to go. Really, it's an annual thing that your departments are going to be thinking about and that you're going to have to think about when it comes to budgeting, what can we afford? What are the priorities that we've heard from our citizenry this year or next year? And let's address what we can, but it's a continuous process and something that you'll be talking about for years to come. We did establish some implementation priorities, but these are subject to change, again, based on the information that you all get and priorities you get from citizens, and then also just things that come up and opportunities that come up. Because although, you know, we may think something might be a long-term project, if you're already moving towards upgrading a park or upgrading a streetscape or replacing a building or doing some renovations in a building, sometimes we can go ahead and make those changes that might be more expensive while we're doing that to address those ADA issues kind of more on the front end. So the priority rights-of-way improvements, this was something that we looked at, again, not throughout the whole city, but on the core area, $2.5 million was the total cost estimate for those improvements. That doesn't include the buildings or parks. This is just those public rights-of-way. Some driveway reconstruction, sidewalk reconstruction, and addressing gaps, addressing tripping hazards, curb ramps, detectable warning strips, crosswalk, stop-walk bars, and then push-button signals as well. And, you know, the monitoring progress piece of this is, as Sandy mentioned, this is a living document. It's meant to be updated on an annual basis. And then, you know, a bigger update probably in about five years. So see what all we've accomplished and what remains. And then you all are really meant to review it every year, and staff will be working with it. And annual reviews are going to be part of the process as it's going to be an annual activity. So that's really all the highlights that I have. Happy to talk about anything in more detail or answer any questions you may have.
I've got one question. Just curiosity's sake, the survey that went out, approximately how many people, citizens, took advantage of that?
Not a lot. I think it was a handful, yeah. Seven people. But again, one of the main things we did was establish the grievance procedure.
Right.
So that's really meant to be an ongoing thing.
Sure.
That is a rolling, on a rolling basis, to where there's a process where if there's an issue and you all are notified of it, and you can, you know, plan accordingly to address it sooner rather than later.
Yeah. I got a question. Were there any specific city facilities or infrastructure that were prioritized in the first phase of the plan?
Well, if you go back to, I'll go back to this, really. A lot of the more inexpensive things, we call short-term priorities. So that's like striping parking spaces, like if you don't have enough accessible parking spaces or a van-accessible parking space, that was suggested as being a short-term priority because it's relatively low cost. Replacing door hardware in buildings, that's something that is not that bad. Tree trimming, landscaping trimming that is encroaching into those pedestrian accessible routes. Those are kind of low-hanging fruit, but that's not all that you're probably going to be doing. I mean, you'll have a regular process of addressing curb ramps on an annual basis and sidewalk maintenance and that sort of thing. So those are going to also address a lot of the bigger things, start to anyway. And then the midterm priorities are the bigger things, replacement of water fountains, more installations in bathrooms and handrails. And then the long-term priorities are those that you're really going to have to plan for through the CIP, and those could be structural changes to buildings, redesigning bathrooms, and creating accessible routes where there are none. So that could be, you know, a sidewalk gap or pairing a bunch of curb ramps together along a route. That would be those long-term priorities.
Yeah, because I know Councilmember Walker, he's mentioned several times about adding more benches across the city.
Yeah.
Yes, I wanted to see if that's something that we can prioritize.
And that's not necessarily required in the ADA benches specifically, but that's just good practice to have benches periodically in public spaces, you know, along main roads, in parks, in city facilities or properties owned by city facilities, you know, for, you know, not just disabled folks, but seniors as well. That's a good public space design. If you're going to design for all ages, then young folks and older folks need to take rests. So, thank you.
I'm just going to make a comment. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, I assume that from here on out, this will be probably one of our topics at our winter retreat, I can almost imagine, I guess.
Yeah, reference Joel Perotti and some information. Kudos and thankful to you. Forty, forty-five thousand in the budget for ongoing maintenance and compliance of facilities. I'll just give you a quick snapshot. Thirty-five thousand is for all facilities that are not water and sewer, and then we've got 10,000 for water and sewer in your fiscal year. So we are, I don't want to compare it to streets and maps and street maintenance and paving, but it's the same general principle. We begin and continue to nibble at that ear for a continual process. Thankful for the report and just a key takeaway, and I know Sandy's going to nominate me for this one. The risk, the high risk, is the loss of your federal grant programs if you don't demonstrate the plan. And even for us, beyond demonstrating the plan, is taking an attack in a positive way of incrementally resolving some of these. We won't be able to lift it off. He is accurate and spot-on with the CIP capital improvement to address some of the larger issues that we have that we know about. You got short version, you got it in your budget, and you're attacking it right now.
Chris, if I could ask you two questions. And I ask them tonight because this meeting is televised and there'll be people at home that will see it. This gentleman mentioned our ADA coordinator. Who is the ADA coordinator? And could someone highlight the grievance procedure for those in the room and in the TV audience?
Sure. You heard from her first. Her name is Sandy Watkins. Sandy?
So I will say, I have that now as a hat as well. And so we have the grievance procedure on our website. If you just go to MoreheadCityNC.org and type in ADA, you'll be able to pull up that page. There's a link, and the process is outlined there. But basically, bring those issues to me, and we will coordinate with other departments to, if it's something that needs to be resolved immediately, that we can resolve immediately, then we will, you know, to the extent that we can. But if it's something that has a budgetary component, we'll do similar to what we did this year, coordinate with the finance department and make those budget requests. That's part of my duties now is to ensure that we're regularly tackling those projects and keeping those on the council's list of issues that need a budgetary element.
Thank you, ma'am. I know it's in good hands.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chris, how big of a role would Parks and Recreation Master Study Plan play in the ADA Transition Plan?
I mean, each of those, each of the master plans we have are integral, they're like interlocking pieces. I guess I'm assuming your targeted question was, is it going to address those issues in the Parks and Rec Master Plan? No, but we as a staff collectively, just like your fiscal year budget, have to look at all those elements together and make sure they interplay and coordinate. The Parks and Rec Master Plan is dissimilar to what you're having here as a requirement and moving forward, but there is an overlay. I want to reinforce again, of all the conversations we've had about budget this year, you didn't hear much about this one and the money you put inside of that element to start attacking it. But I'm glad this is coming out now. So champion to our staff here for knowing this was forthcoming, knowing you were going to get a report, and holding fast to the requirement that we had to demonstrate our proactivity in at least at $45,000. Not a lot compared to the 25, 23 million that's on the list of things to accomplish, but we championed an attack to say, hey, we've got to start addressing this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Sorry to be long-winded.
No, you're fine.
It is fair to point out that this plan deals, as they've talked about, with public buildings and other forms of public property. But you also have to remember that our planning ordinances and our building requirements through the inspection department addresses private property needs. So it's a combined effort between the owners of the building and the government to bring ADA up to specs, to the level that we need it to be. So keep that in mind. This is part of, really, a pretty large effort to improve services for our ADA people.
You're exactly right. Your current standards, when things are built today, they're typically built to ADA standards. A lot of what we documented in this plan are things that were built years ago and didn't necessarily follow the best standards. So we're retrofitting a lot, and it'll take time to do it. But the new stuff's getting built to the standard, and then we're going to be taking care of these issues.
Anybody else? Any other questions with the consultant? All right, thank you. All right, Chris, City Managers' Report. Oh, excuse me, we need a backup. We got to prove this, don't we?
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-49, approving the American Disability Act ADA Transition Plan.
I'll second it.
With those documents included, Jerry.
Okay. Motion made by George, seconded by Harvey, to adopt Resolution 2025-R-49. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. All right, now City Managers' Report.
Perfect. Very brief, just calendar items today. Refreshing everyone's good collective memory, Veterans Day Parade is Saturday, November 8th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. Our Veterans Day holiday is recognized on Tuesday, November 11th, key date, remember that. All nonessential city offices will be closed. Your November City Council meeting has been rescheduled because of that date for Tuesday, November 12th, at 5:30. Pardon that, shouldn't say Tuesday. November 12th is a Wednesday. Wednesday. I caught myself in reading my notes. So I'm starting to get Madam Clerk looking at me like, wrong date. So rescheduling of City Council's meeting for that date because of the Veterans Day holiday was the point. And then lastly, Thanksgiving holiday, Thursday and Friday, November 27th through 28th, all nonessential city offices will be closed. All have.
Yeah.
Trying to be brief today.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda, citizens' comments. Look around. Okay, I know Ricky had something to say. Can somebody take a mic to Ricky, please? And just reminder, name and address for the record and a three-minute time limit.
Rick Goff, 1816 Sheppes Road. I wear on my shirt tonight. The ADA, this was 1990. Thirty-five years ago, I was there. I seen the ceremony. I was come from Florida, and I came from Florida. I came here in 93. But I come to get away from the issues of ADA to the point where I knew what it could cause. It could cause people with disabilities to be, you know, the one that go out and sue this one and sue that one. I didn't want to be involved with that. Matter of fact, Justin Dart, who was the man on the podium in the wheelchair, I justified in telling him, civil rights and suing people makes that person not suing them, not the victim, but, you know, not good. So I came up here to get away from that. But I think I did a disservice. And I kind of feel like I let my community by not being more persistent, coming here and getting people here to understand the issues. So I'm going to ask y'all's forgiveness for not being out here all the time. George, you know, I at times I just push, you know what I'm saying? Remember the occasion where I pushed? At one time, I did a lot more than you would have done that day. And I didn't want to do that. And it took a lot because I came away from that, you know? I came here. But I think in the long run, I did a disservice to the disabled community. And we all know our time is short, and we need to, you know, help our communities. So I'm going to ask this for the commissioners to start a committee to get disabled people involved. Y'all got to invite them. I mean, we can invite, you know, tell anybody that there's no, there's no meeting point. And there is disabled people here, and they have these, not me, these sidewalks here are crazy, crazy stupid. I mean, in this survey, they don't even adjust Bridges Street, and you see how many curb cuts and how many things. I can say this, it's been 35 years since ADA was passed. And I heard before the meeting that we've now got a line item for ADA. I guess it's on the budget of $35,000. What do you think about that? That's $1,000 for every year you have not done anything about it. I mean, I think you're all willing, but you didn't know where to go with it. I mean, you've got an ADA coordinator that wears so many hats. I hope she can do a good job, but you got to get a committee. You got to get, you know, and everything you're doing up there, you're representing the community. If you don't get the community here, you know, if you don't get them involved, leave here, you're on it. Get out into the community and find out what they need, you know? But the sidewalks here are terrible. I don't know how many hazards. It's crazy, you know? And
Ricky, we appreciate your hard work over the years. It's come to fruition.
Well, I've come here a couple times over the seafood festival.
And we'll be keeping you involved in this as we move forward.
I'm actually stepping up the plate to, I had a chance to meet with, I've been trying to do some things with the state because we all know that the municipalities aren't required by the state to have off-street parking. required by the state to have off-street parking. Now, by request through ADA federally, we're supposed to have it. Federal funds, ADA's federal, they have a provision for off-street parking. The state didn't acquire that, and I think a lot of it was because in the western part of the state, in the mountains, in that region, it's hard to make off-street parking. We have it for parking lots, but not our off-street. So, and we've had some off-street parking downtown Morehead. I don't know what happened, there was one spot that kind of evaporated away in front of the sanitary, over, it was over by the, where the strip store is there, where the seafood fest was, that was Andy Kent's spot there.
Yeah.
It's no longer there.
Can we invite you to one of our committee meetings? You know, we...
I don't know if you have an ADA committee.
No, well, we have committees that we include ADA, which is our planning committee. And I know we have some other people in the audience that like to speak tonight also.
Yeah, at some point in time, we can address all the shortfalls, but I can tell you that I'm going to do better.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work. A gentleman talking, all right, Chris, okay. Yeah, next person, please.
Like you stand here, do you...
Behind the podium, please.
Is it a apartment?
Yes, yes.
I'm Chris Monteleon, M-O-N-T-E-L-E-O-N. I live at one oh six North Sixth Street in Morehead City. And I know everybody up here wants better things, better quality of life, more financial sanity for Morehead City. So I know it's going to likely be with disappointment that you hear that the city, in your name, because you're the ultimate authority, published four days ago misinformation of a financial and material nature. And that's the United States Army of Reserve Center matter, which was picked up by the paper, and that misinformation was published, although with proper attribution and caveat, by the paper, to the City Council. The United States Army Reserve Center in downtown was never available to the people of Morehead City. It wasn't, it isn't, and it shall not be. And this City Council oversaw, ultimate authority, the various departments, through the City Manager, to spend money in development proposals when there was absolutely no available possibility of that hotspot being erected in our fair city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Okay, Council comments, Harvey?
I'll make this very short. Thank you all for coming tonight. Rick, I'm glad to see you here.
Thank you, Harvey. Glad you're here.
Rick, I want you to know, we can't change the past, but we can certainly do something about the future, okay? And things are going to change, okay? They don't change overnight, but sometimes you have to bring light to it. And as far as you, you're doing a great job. You know, you're doing a wonderful job, and I want you to keep on keeping on. So don't feel bad about anything. You're doing a great job, and we hope that you will take part in what we're getting ready to do with our ADA program here, and hope that we can have you, maybe start us a committee, okay? With Sandy, because she's going to need some help. But thank you very much, and thank you all for coming tonight, and enjoy this new weather change. Thank you all very much.
George?
It's good to see everyone out tonight. As Harvey said, I hope you're enjoying this cooler weather that we've been having. And Rick, it's good to see you here tonight, and like the mayor said, we hope that you can attend our planning committee that meets monthly and stay involved. You have been involved, and you continue to be involved, and please, please try to attend those meetings, they're scheduled every month, and it would be nice to have you to those meetings to share your thoughts and your concerns with us, and stay involved. I do want, since this meeting is being taped, I do want to remind everyone that November fourth is Election Day, please exercise your right to vote November fourth. Thank you, Mayor.
Lee? Thank you, Mayor Jones. Again, I just want to thank Mr. Rick Goff and Mr. Eric Gilliam back there, for them always being vocal and giving us great feedback and input, and I'm proud of our staff for coming up with the ADA Transition Plan. This is not something, especially in this area, that a lot of municipalities are targeting. So I want to thank staff and Sandy for championing this type of endeavor. I also want to thank staff for making parks and recreation a priority. And speaking about that, that's the reason why we wanted to go out to the Army Reserve property, because we want to make parks and recreation a priority in our city. And it's disappointing that we weren't able to acquire that property, but we're going to look at other properties to explore and add more parks and recreation for all of our citizens, not just youth, but our seniors and our families as a whole. I also want to say congratulations to Officer Tim E. Step. He received the William Bill Conde Professionalism Award today at a noontime Rotary Meeting that he had at the sanitary restaurant, so kudos to him. I know Officer E. Step personally, he came from Greensboro, and he just talks about, all the time, he talks about how much he loves Morehead City. This is definitely a change of pace for him from being in Greensboro, and he loves this community, so that was well deserved, and want to congratulate him on that honor. Also want to thank my fellow council members and Mayor Jones. Throughout this whole election process, I can honestly say that everybody has been professional, we all get along up here. I look at other municipalities and how people are at war with one another. At the end of the day, we still had to work together, and at the end of the day, every single person up here, all six of us, love Morehead City. So at, so on November, on November the fourth, whatever decision is made, I just want to tell the citizens of Morehead City, I'm proud to be a council member. And that, like, again, like I just stated, that doesn't matter how it shakes up, I still have the utmost respect for Mayor Jerry Jones. This man has served Morehead City for thirty years, twenty-six years as mayor, forty, I mean, four years on the council, thirty years, three decades, this man has given his life, he has given his service to this community, even before that, being a volunteer firefighter. And I came out and said at our forum that we had at the museum, that the women, the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commons put on, that at the end of the day, I had the utmost respect for Mayor Jones, and I don't want to take away from what he's done for Morehead City. So I tell all my supporters, show that man respect, because without Mayor Jones, there would be no Councilmember Lee Styles, and that's what I wanted to say tonight, thank you.
I too attended the Rotary Meeting today where Tim E. Step received the Bill Conde Award. I am pleased to say that I knew Bill Conde as a man, and, you know, he was one of my friends' dad, and he was just a superior person and a gentle person. We have recognized a lot of officers for excellence over the years, and this is the device that we use to do that. I'd like to thank our folks that come to us and talk to us and remind us about ADA. We have worked, and you heard the consultant give you his recommendations about improving the process, it now falls under the planning. Sandy is a very capable person, she has a lot on her plate, you're absolutely right, Rick. But I would also like to tell you that I am the planning chairman this year, and sat next to me is Richard A. Bell, who is also on the planning committee, and this will be an area that we will be giving more attention to and continuing to add our efforts to improving conditions. Rick and Eric, I believe October sixteenth is the next planning committee meeting. It is open to the public, it's always at nine o'clock, it is upstairs, we do have an elevator, so of course you know that you can get up there, and we encourage you to come and talk with us.
All right, I'm going to be a little long-winded here, okay? I'm just going to tell you all that upfront, there's a few things I need to get off my chest, and I'm going to do that. First of all, Rick, Jerry, and myself have our fiftieth class reunion this weekend, so you're going to be there, and I know you're going to be there, right? And so fifty years that we all went to school together, so, and before I forget it, thank the staff for everything y'all have done, you too, Chief, Chiefs, excuse me, Deputy Chief already knows I'm talking about her, so. But a couple of other things, I just feel like I need to say, and, and, Lee, I guess it's going to be addressed towards you, some of the comments that you have made over the past on Facebook that I take a heartburn for, okay, with. I know last year during the, that budget session, we were all on board with the increase as proposed, until you brought out that there was some erroneous information that the City Manager put out. Of course, I think he later refuted that, but you were in favor of that until that came out, then you voted against it. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that you were right, but some of it was wrong, okay? That's my take on it. This year's budget, as some of y'all know, we probably spent ninety minutes hashing the budget back and forth. The original budget came into the City Manager from the Department Heads Requesting Forty-One Cent, if I'm not badly mistaken, you correct me if I'm wrong, but his first proposal to us was thirty-nine percent. We all knew that thirty-nine cent was not going to happen, every one of us up here knew that. And what I took offense to, Lee, is that the way you implied is that you championed it getting down to thirty-four cent. It was all of us collectively who got it down to thirty-four percent. We could have got it down to thirty-two percent and saved the taxpayers another seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, but that didn't happen. Bill and I wanted it to happen, and it just didn't happen. So what I'm saying is, it's a collective, it's a collective effort, it's just not Councilman Styles. That's what it portrays on social media. The next thing I'm going to address, and I, anyhow, I was hesitant to do it, but I'm going to do it anyhow, is that you publicly stated at the mayor's forum and in another segment, and it may have been on Facebook, after we gave the direction to the City Manager for the Marlins contract to be sent out, that yourself and Councilman Blue went behind our backs, so to speak, and talked to Mr. Bingle to get him to pressure other people to halt the negotiations or to put a stop to it. I certainly didn't appreciate that. If it should have went from the City Manager to the Marlins teams or organization, and then if they didn't like it, then it should have come back to us, and we should have proceeded from there, but not to go behind our backs, Bill's and Harvey's back, to go to Buddy, or Buddy coming to y'all, don't make any difference, it's the same thing as far as I'm concerned, but I took offense to that as well. So, you know, it's all about, as you say, as we all say, transparency, and I don't know that that's necessarily transparency. So those are the things I wanted to say, and again, I'm not personally attacking you, I'm certainly not, Lee, I hope you know that, but there's some of the, I, maybe it's just the way you worded, I don't know, so, but that's all I have to say.
Now regarding Bangle, what you mean about pressure?
Excuse me?
When you say pressure, me and George talked to Buddy, and when you say pressure...
The contract went out to Mr. Bangle, Bingo, and then the next thing we heard is that, as a matter of fact, I think I get a phone call, and I won't say what Councilman it was, that's saying that he needs to be the third vote to put the thing on hold. And I'm thinking, put it on hold? We just all collectively had a meeting to direct the City Manager on what to send. So now why are we backtracking? That's what I'm getting at, and I think at the public forum, you said that you and Councilman George Blue have been in regular conversation with Bingo and are seeking a resolution that benefits both the team and the city. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I don't see what's wrong with me and George talking to Buddy.
Again, we gave, we collectively gave the direction to the City Manager to send it out, okay? It's up to Mr. Bingle whether or not, if he accepts it or not. It's not up for us to go to him and say, you know, you don't want it, if you don't want it, just let us, just let us know, and we can put it off. So it's not up to us to do that, that's my feeling. All right, thank you, Richard.
Ricky, I call him Ricky, right, Richard said Ricky and I go, we go back a ways, in fact, we don't tell stories on each other, because if I tell a story to him, he can tell one back to me, so we'll just let it stay like it is, high school days are high school days. Yeah, but I remember Ricky's accident many years ago, too, and, and he, Ricky never gave up, and he has a cause, he has a mission in life, and he has devoted that to look out for other people, not just himself, but other people. I appreciate that, Ricky, a whole lot. What I'm going to ask you to do, challenge you to do, is many years ago, I had a mayor's committee for people with disabilities, and it was a strong committee, I still have the shirt hanging in my closet, that I used to wear, and champion this committee, but our chairman, which she was also handicapped at the time, she had passed, and I couldn't get anybody else to step up, and we really needed help from people with disabilities on this committee, so we know what we were doing, so think about that. I'd love to go ahead and get that committee formed again, and we did a lot of good for Morehead back, back a couple of decades ago.
You're going to give him a gavel?
Hmm?
You're going to give him a gavel?
Give him a gavel, we'll give him a, yeah, we'll give him a shirt, but we need help, you know, you need, we need professional help, you need to talk to people that know what they're talking about, so that's what I'm asking you to consider. And just real quickly, we know we went through, I know it was a northeaster this weekend, but it was, it was just about a hurricane in downtown Morehead and other places around, and while we were home sleeping, sitting up, listening to the wind, we had a lot of staff that were patrolling the area, not just the firemen and the police responding to emergencies, but we also had our Public Works, Public Utilities, and City Manager out all night long, we had lift stations that were acting up, we had generators that wouldn't start up, and, but they worked all night long to keep us, keep us safe, to keep us in operation, so kudos and congratulations, and thank you to everybody for doing the unsung hero work while we were home being comfortable.
And thank you to everybody for, for, uh, doing the unsung hero work while we were home, being comfortable, you were out in the messed up at work. And thank you, everybody, for, for, for all that you do for all of us. Um, it's a six-twenty, that is all that I have, and, and for the good of the organization, thank you, everybody, for being here, and we'll go ahead and call this meeting adjourned. Yes, sir.